I've got seven o'clock. Good evening, everyone. I'm another for the town planner. I will take attendance for town plan and zoning commission meeting and then turn it over to our chair. Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Mike Grabulis.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Matthew Hotbogner. At the moment, I'm not seeing. Oh, hang on. Yeah, okay. Matt Hotbogner.
Here.
Thank you. Liz Sanford.
Here.
Ina St. James.
Here.
James Rockler.
Here.
Matthew Bando.
Here.
And for the record, we were notified that Mike Walsh will not be in attendance this evening. And I'm sure it's all yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. Today is December 12th. This is the last meeting of 2022. For the record, our next meeting will be January 9th. And commissioners, CND sent out a schedule, so please put it on your calendar for 2023. All right, um, Scott, there's no notice for you to read, so we're all set with that. Thank you. And, um, I guess for, I guess, I don't have to appoint anyone yet. Right? So we get to that item or should I do it now?
Um, does it matter to you? No, you're, we can, we're good. Okay. We can wait till we get down to Brianna's.
That's fine. All right. We're gonna kick it off with the new business items. The first one is an application from Tractor Supply. Of that property located at 361 Scott Swamp Road. And Shannon, did we get the extension?
Uh, we did receive a written request for an extension to January 9th. So if we could get a just a motion in a second to continue this matter to the January 9th meeting, I'd appreciate it, please.
All right. Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion um, to continue the 361 Scott Swamp Road site plan approval by Tractor Supply to the January 9th meeting.
Thank you. And second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're good. So we are all set, sure. The next item is an application from Brian Cleveland Architects. Or that's who's going to be presenting, I guess, for property located at 354 called Highway. And it's a site plan approval to construct deck for outdoor seating, a new layout of parking area, and addition of storage area. Do we have Mr. Cleveland?
I am here.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Hi, uh, thank you all for allowing us to come and present this evening. Um, I am here representing 354 Cold Highway, which is the Five Corners Bistro. Um, I'm sure many of you are familiar with it. I've heard that a lot of you have actually gone to the restaurant from the owners Christina, uh, Christos and Despina. During COVID, of course, a lot of restaurants were allowed to provide outdoor seating at the restaurants by submitting an application and almost by course allowed to have exterior seating. Currently, their exterior seating is at the rear of the building on an existing concrete pad. Um, it's not a particularly good location. Uh, it's kind of been dressed up a bit by the, uh, the owners in order to try to make it a little bit nicer. But the views are, are short. They're across the parking lot. It's not particularly a great place to have, uh, outdoor seating area. So they came to me to look at adding a 40-seat addition to the front of the building. Um, this obviously is a much better and more interesting location for the outdoor seating to be. It's much more engaging with the way that people come in and out of the building. Um, it allows the people that are sitting in that area to have some interaction with other things that are going on, albeit the street is there. Um, but this is definitely going to be a more interesting place for people to be during, um, nice weather. So we are looking to add that piece to it. As part of this, um, we did an analysis on the number of seats that are currently present within the restaurant and what the additional 40 seats that we're proposing for the exterior seating would do to that count. So currently, the, um, interior has 165 seats. Um, we believe that the largest staff is going to be 14. Um, so the result is that the site with the existing seating condition needs about 97 parking spaces. The existing layout of the parking lot, uh, currently only has 91 parking spaces, uh, three of which are handicapped, which is also under the required amount for, uh, the Connecticut Building Code. So as part of this renovation, we're looking at relaying out the parking layout, which you can see in front of you. Um, without actually adding any paved surface, we've been able to reconfigure the parking lot to get up to 98. Um, I'm sorry, 97 parking spaces, one more than what is required for the current number of seats. And the, that includes four handicap parking spaces. Again, what is required for building code. Um, some of the other pieces of this with the reconfiguration of the parking lot, we, we understand that the lot coverage for this property having been in existence for quite a while, does exceed what is allowed within this zone. So as such, we are proposing that certain areas which are hatched primarily in the corners or some of these peninsula areas to be, have the asphalt cut away and allow those to be pervious areas. So trying to help with the amount of impervious surface area that is currently present on the property. Um, the proposed deck would, in our opinion, not add to any impervious surface area because it would be a deck elevated above the ground with open decking material to allow the water to filter through and just percolate into the ground that's underneath that deck surface. Um, understanding that with the current number of seating within the building plus the additional 40 um, exterior seats, we are obviously going to be in excess of the number of seats that is allowed for the number of parking spaces that we have. So if you could pan up just a little bit to the, um, the building plan there. On the left-hand side of the building plan, there are two rooms. One is a private dining room that seats about 12. And then there is kind of a function room that can also be opened up to that private dining room that is separate from the rest of the general seating within the restaurant. The deck you can see coming off the front of the building, having a new door leading from the dining area out into the, uh, the new deck. What we're proposing is that the areas that are the private dining area and the, um, the other seating area that can be shut off, be allowed to be a, um, a swap. So it's such that during good weather, the patio could be used, but those two other dining areas will not be used. And obviously, this is something that's going to need to be policed, um, primarily by the owners, making sure that there isn't an excess of a total of 165 seats available at any one time during the operation of the business. During inclement weather, you know, say the patio can't be used because it's raining. Um, those interior seats would be allowed to be used and vice versa. If it's nice weather outside and they decide to open up the deck and allow people to sit out there, they won't allow people to sit within those private dining spaces. Um, that will allow us to, again, maintain the 165 seats total within the restaurant and not exceed the parking requirements for the lot. Um, the other piece that we had mentioned was changing over that existing concrete patio space at the back of the building into an enclosed and covered, um, storage area. It would only be accessible from the exterior. It'd be used for probably the patio furniture at the front there or other miscellaneous, um, storage that the restaurant needs. There isn't a lot of other storage space beyond what they have for the restaurant itself, for the freezers and such. So they do need some additional storage space, which this would provide to them. Again, it's not going to add any coverage because it's already a developed area of the site and we're just allowing it to be used as a storage area. Um, just to go through a few numbers relative to, to some of the points that I made, the existing lot coverage is 58%. And with the addition of those um, carve-outs of the parking area, we're actually reducing the lot coverage by over 1,900 square feet. Um, we're also going to be adding some trees, which was requested of us in the couple of front peninsulas. Uh, in order to, again, soften that area. The landscaping around the patio space, uh, will be designed by the landscape designer that they have been using. I don't know if any of you have been out there recently, but they did redo the front landscaped area near their entrance. They are planning on using the same person in order to develop the landscaping around the new deck and some other spots within the front of the property. One of the other, um, portions of the site that we have been talking about with staff and with the owners is the, uh, the gravel area at the back of the property. That area, uh, a few years ago, um, the parking lot was flooding in the back area. And as a way of mitigating the water that wasn't able to percolate out because it was just sitting there on the asphalt, um, the owners engaged a contractor to remove some of the soil and the invasives that were at the rear of the property there. And dig it down a few inches below the elevation of the parking lot and put gravel into that area so that it would treat the water as it was running off of the asphalt and allow it to slowly percolate back down into the ground. Um, we have been asking that that gravel area be allowed to remain as part of our conversations with staff. Uh, I think the outcome of that is that we will remove that gravel, um, when the property is repaved. Uh, but unfortunately, because of budgetary reasons, the pavement and the removal of that gravel is a challenge for them to be able to afford if they do want to put the, the, uh, the patio at the front of the building because really that's what the initial investigation was for, was to provide a patio. Um, it snowballed into needing to do some of these other improvements in order to make that happen. Um, so we're hoping that you would agree that at the time that the pavement is redone on this, that is the time in which they will remove the gravel from that area and put it back to a lawn area. Um, some of the other points that were in the engineer's report, um, we have no exception to, um. Just to, to answer some of the questions that were in there, if you guys had read through it, there is an interior grease trap, so that is all taken care of by Big Dipper. Um, so there is nothing on the site. We do agree to put the additional curbing into the landscape islands, um, provide landscaping around the patio. Of course, we just talked about that. Um, we have reviewed the parking count and there is in fact the 97, not the 96 that we have on it right now. So we'll update the table accordingly. Um, we just talked about the gravel area. Um, and again, we're hoping that that can be done as part of the repavement of the site. Right now, we're just planning on blacking out the existing striping and restriping it accordingly. Um, of course, we are also adding a dumpster pad. That was another provision, um, that was requested of us, which we are doing. Um, it's at the east side of the property near the back corner. So we're also going to add a note to the, uh, site plan that says that those dumpsters can't be, will be picked up between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Um, and then there were some erosion and sediment control notes that we will take care of as part of our actual submission for construction drawings.
Are you all set?
I am.
Okay, great. Thank you for all the information. Very helpful. All right, commissioners, let's go through each one and, um, see if you have any questions. Uh, Patrick?
Yeah, most of them were answered. Um, there, there's not going to be a canopy or anything like that, right? On the patio that's just open to the, the elements, I guess?
There is, um, two canopies proposed. Um, if you jump to the elevations, uh, which are on the fourth sheet, I believe, maybe on the fifth sheet. Um, there is a continuous canopy that is kind of cantilevered arms. Um, so it has a central post and then a cantilever is on both sides. It is a, uh, a porous fabric in order to provide shading over that area and it could be retracted, uh, to the center and be open if it so choose to be open. Uh, and then along the kind of banquet area on the back of that is another cantilevered arm, one way to cover that area of seating. Again, it's, it's porous. We don't want it to obstruct the water's flow through that space so that it can get down into the ground below.
Okay, so it's more for just sunlight and shade, like you said?
Exactly.
All right. And then, um, I think that was it. The only other question, so we, um, the initial, so initially you're just going to blackout everything. And so I guess the pavement's not in good shape. Is that what it is? And it's going to be, um, repaved at, in the near future?
Yeah, it's certainly the desire to have the site repaved, but it is an expensive endeavor. Um, and again, the, the real impetus of this was to get this patio space. Um, and then as they can, they are obviously improving the property. Um, you know, they've been doing the landscaping. They've hired a local artist to paint the front of the building. So they're very interested in making sure that it does continue to get developed.
Okay. Yeah, no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Uh, just one, any additional lighting out at the, uh, at the deck area?
So the canopy system does have very small LED downlights built into the arms. So those will be shining down. There are only a couple of watts each. Um, so it, it is all downlight. It will not light the sky. It's not uplit. Um, and that is the extent of the light that we would have out there.
Okay, thank you. It's all ahead.
Good question. Um, Matt?
No additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. How about you, Liz?
Uh, just one question about the, uh, the old patio or the, the concrete pad. You're proposing, um, putting a roof over it. Are there going to be solid walls? Will it be chain link? Will it be some sort of like, is it becoming a three-season area or a year-round sturdy facility? I'm not quite sure on that.
Yep, it, it will be walled in. Um, we also do need to extend the roof in order to create, uh, that space. So would be, uh, quote, "normal" construction, albeit unheated.
Okay, so no heat, but you could store what neat tables, chairs, whatever, and things like that?
Correct.
Um, okay, and, um, the, uh, handicap spots right now, they're going to be in the back?
Yeah, right now they're, they're obstructing some of the driving aisle right next to the bottom of the existing ramp there. Um, we had investigated originally putting it on the other side of the parking area adjacent to where that ramp is, but this cross slopes there are too steep to allow them to meet the, um, the requirements there for handicap spaces. So the area that we're showing them is very level and it allows a very level, um, uh, crosswalk over to where the ramp is.
Okay, that's great. And that was giving my next question is exactly where is the ramp? But now I, now I see it right there. Okay, that seems very logical. Uh, okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. James?
No questions for me.
All right, and Matthew?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, so, um, thank you for all the details and, um, you know, I think it's a good compromise, what, you know, what we heard. Um, the patio looks lovely. I, I think the property is set back enough from the road that, uh, I'm sure people will enjoy it. Um, I don't have any questions about the storage or the gravel. Um, lighting, what do we have? Uh, excuse me, Shannon? For the, I know it's small lighting, but what, what do we require? The, the lighting we turn off at a certain time or?
Well, uh, yes. So when the, the businesses close, then the lighting and, uh, would be shut down. And then I'm assuming in the winter or inclement weather, when the patio is not even being used, then the canopies aren't being used, that there would be no lighting there. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Okay, uh, and then, uh, Shannon, I did not confirm the numbers, but the spaces align, every?
The, the space is aligned. I do have one request with respect to the gravel parking. Um, we don't want the purpose of what they did was for infiltration, per, you know, to, from a stormwater standpoint. We're not in complete agreement with it, um, but do understand the burden of correcting it now. We want to ensure there's no parking on it. Uh, it certainly, if it's parked on regularly and compacted, then the infiltration properties will be eliminated. So
That makes sense.
Um, that would be the only, but from a parking quantity, uh, the math works and, uh, that agreement to block off those sections seems
Yeah, then.
reasonable.
Yep.
And, uh, uh, obviously, if it becomes an issue, then we'll have to enforce.
Yeah. Um, do you have any concerns for a client with, with, uh, that gravel portion that Shannon just described?
No, and that is something I did neglect to mention. We, we are in agreement of putting a couple of signs along the edge of that area, um, stating that there's to be no parking in the gravelled space.
Okay. We'll see how it goes, I guess, right? Between that and also, um, closing the inter, interior rooms to provide, okay? Okay, um, I don't have any further questions, commissioners, before we, uh, do the vote. Any final questions?
Yeah, I got, well, I just have one. So the timing of the gravel pad, um, so Shannon, do we need to put any kind of time limit on that? You, you know, obviously it's, if we say it's fine when they repave, um, I guess we don't really know when that is.
Yeah, I, ideally I'd like to, but I think it's, we're, uh, yeah, I think it's going to be problematic. So other than saying that at the time that it's repaved, that the gravel is, is removed and reconfigured to a traditional stormwater strip, um. Yeah, I wasn't going to set it for, you know, who knows whether 20, it's 2024 or 2020. If this is a 2023 project for them, then it's probably 2024 for the parking lot or 2025. So I yeah, as long as we've got enough in there, so it's not being parked on, um, and we'll make sure that it ends up in the approval letter as well. Um, I think we'll, we'll have to roll with it that way.
Okay, sounds good. So even if, so, um, in the motion, just as presented, right? Because we talked about all this is fine?
Yeah, that's fine. And then we'll get it in the letter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, good question, Patrick. So, thank you. All right. So we do need a motion in a second, please.
All right, Patrick Carrier, um, I'd like to make a motion to um, accept, I'm sorry, not accept, to approve the site plan approval by Brian Cleveland Architects at 354 Cole Highway to construct a deck for outdoor seating and new layout for parking area and addition for storage area.
As presented.
As presented, yes, sorry.
Yeah.
Scott Hall, one second.
Excellent. Does everyone know what we're voting on? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we are all set. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, my gosh, sorry. Good thing it's the last meeting. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Okay, that was good. Sorry about that. All right, the next one is, uh, well, next few, I guess, yeah. The next few are applications we are accepting from January 9th. Uh, please take vitamins, whatever you need to, because we need you all for January 9th. All right, first application is from, uh, Michael Serena. It's for property located at 1024 Farmington Avenue. And it's an application for a waiver for sale of alcohol, beer and wine and scheduling a public hearing with a recommended date of January 9th. We need a motion in a second, please.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Michael Serena. Or Serena, yeah. Um, at, at 1024 Farmington Avenue for waiver for the sale of alcohol, beer and wine, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 9th of 2023.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. It's in. Next one is an application from Ashley and Andrew Kidd for a lot located at 8745 River Road. And it's a change of zone application. We need a motion in a second to accept the application, please.
Oh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, um, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Ashley and Andrew Kidd at Lot 87, uh, 8745 River Road for change of zone from C1 to R20 for construction of single-family home and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 9th, 2023.
Thank you. Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all set. Next one is an application from CPD Parent Properties LLC. It's an application for property located of, at 342 called Highway. Uh, we need a motion in a second to accept this application, please.
Uh, yep, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by CPD Parent Properties LLC at 342 Cole Highway for change of zone from BR B1 to B1, special permit and site plan approval for gas station with convenience store, bank branch with drive-through and coffee building and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 9th, 2023.
Okay, then. Office building? This coffee building?
Oh, office building. That's fine. Yeah, we're good.
We're good. Thank you. And a second, please.
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're good, okay? And another one to accept from Mott Corporation. It's an application for special permit and site plan approval for property at 1690 New Britain Avenue.
Uh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Mott Corporation at 1690 New Britain Avenue for special permit and site plan approval for change of use to manufacturing for portion of building and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 9th, 2023.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one is in. All right, and then, um, next one is an application from Harold and Wilson for a property located at 61 Eli Road. And our favorite topic, the ridgeline, but we need a, a motion in a second to accept it, please.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for special permit um, by Harold M. Wilson at 61 Eli Road for clearing, clear cutting in ridgeline protection area and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 9th, 2023.
Thank you. And a second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Application has been accepted. All right, the next one is an application from Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission. Um, and we need a, well, this is for sing, uh, for multifamily residential housing moratorium. We need a motion in a second, please.
Uh, yep, uh, Patrick here, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Town of Pl, uh, Town of Farmington Planning and Zoning Commission for amendment to the zoning regulations to add Article 1, Section 5 dot A dot multifamily residential housing moratorium and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 9th, 2023.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. And the final, final, uh, application we are accepting this evening is also from Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission. And it has to deal with the moratorium on single-family residential properties. And we need a motion in a second, please.
Uh, Patrick here, I'd like to uh, make a motion to accept the application by the Town of Farmington Planning and Zoning Commission for amendment to the zoning regulations to add Article 1, Section 5 dot B dot single-family To the zoning regulations to add Article One, Section Five dot B dot single family. Residential housing moratorium and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January ninth, two thousand twenty three.
Thank you, second.
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, application has been accepted. Shannon, do you wanna say something, or you'll do it a kind of?
Well, if there's a question and discussion, we can handle it later.
Okay, awesome.
We'll move on to the public hearings.
Perfect. All right, so we have one public hearing this evening. It's actually a continuation uh, from November seventh. Um, Scott, question for you. Uh, were you able to listen to? Um, that meeting on this topic? Yeah, you were absent for on that day.
I did not, and as I did look at the agenda review, but I did not listen to the meeting.
No, no problem. Uh, so for this portion, let's see, who is, is it Matthew?
James.
James.
James, okay. It's James is next up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
James, um. Um, are you okay if we, uh, if you become a voting member on this item?
Yeah, I was present for the meeting, going through the first one, so we're good.
All right, excellent, thank you. All right, so uh, let's see, where do we leave off? So we have an application from Brianna Hill. And it's for special permit to install trees in the ridgeline protection setback area. To replace trees that were removed without approval. At properly property located at twenty one Eli Road R eighty zone. I know we. Had lots and lots of discussion on it.
We do, we have the survey on, uh, so Brian Denna was on for the homeowner, so perhaps we'll.
Sure.
Um, uh, Brian, do you wanna uh, perhaps walk through what you've worked on on behalf of the owner over the last?
Yes, originally back in November, we had um, put in an application to plant nine trees. In the area that was cleared within the ridgeline protection zone that Shannon is showing now. And at the meeting, Shannon and Bruce Seer. Um, had some concerns about. Additional construction that happened after my survey was complete. You see around the pool, there's some keystone. And um, a retaining wall and a memorial tree. And the the issue was in the concern was, were they in the ridgeline protection zone or not? Um, they were, they are outside of the ridgeline protection zone, but. In discussion with town staff and which was presented to you the last time, there was discussions about putting in. A fence, removing the fence that is in the ridgeline protection area, which. The applicant has agreed to do, but we also discovered when we located the. The pool filter and the pool heater. That they are also. In the ridgeline protection zone and need to be relocated. Unfortunately, at this time. During the winter, that's kind of difficult. They're gonna have to wait till spring to do that, along with the planting. But part of what the town asked for was that we expand the conservation easement, and that's that cross hatch area. Um. It comes up just behind where the memorial tree is. Which we discussed last time, and then the fence will be behind the tree, but outside of the conservation easement. And that hatch area will add three hundred and eighty seven square feet to the contrary.
Okay.
Oh, three hundred and ninety seven. Um. We agree to all the towns comments, the town has, they want the trees planted before May first. Inspections are gonna be required for the first three years. This May, they're gonna get planted, and then. A health assessment in October, and then for three years following that. Every year. Uh, the owner's responsible for filing revised easement plan. Um, we'll add. Add meets and bounds to that in an area. And we'll make a Mylar and a legal description and put that on file. With the town. They also are gonna be required to install conservation markers. Across the top of the ridgeline conservation area. The dashed line that Shannon is showing now. And we've agreed to that. And the fence that is way down the hill has to be relocated. To outside the easement area. Um, one thing that Shannon did mention in her letter to me the other day was. That part of the fence actually encroaches upon the abutter David Ford to the south. Um, I spoke with. Brianna this afternoon, and David is aware of that. I've done plenty of surveys where. This happens, um, sometimes the result is move your fence, get it off my property, other times, um. If there's not an issue between the neighbors, I say. You know, you need to write a letter to each other, both of you need to sign it, saying that your fence is on my property. And if and when the time comes, I wanna move, you agree to move it, but right now you can leave it there, and. I spoke to Brianna about that. She says she will approach David about that and see if they will, you know, agree and will sign the letter. If not, then she'll have to move the fence. That's, I mean, that's really not in the ridgeline protection zone. That's not what we're here to discuss tonight, but it is. An observation that that Shannon made, and I did speak with the applicant about how to approach that. Um, happy to answer any other questions. We went out and located. All the improvements there. Uh, Bruce had a question about, there's a catch basin in the driveway and the outlet. The outlet goes to the north of the pool house into a. Like a little stone area to filter out the water. The pipe is actually buried under the ground in the stone right there. And any questions you have, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. All right, you have comments before we start, no?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, let's uh, roll through commissioners first, and then I will see if anyone has called in. On this application, okay, perfect. All right, Patrick, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so so both those fences are existing. I I see the one on the lower, you know, in the ridgeline. But then there's also the other one on top there, that's existing, it's coming off of the. Uh, pool house, I guess, right?
That's a small fence, just the one she's showing now is really just to hide the um, the filter from the pool.
Yep.
And keep people from falling off the. The outside patio there, because it gets very steep behind there.
And then the intent is to take that fence, remove it, and bring it back up?
Correct, out, yes, yes, outside of the conservation easement area.
And now does that, so so it's gonna go like in between the conservation dashed line there and the end of that retaining wall?
Correct.
That's how that's gonna go, and then connect somehow to that other?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, no, that was my only question. Thank you.
Okay, Patrick, thank you. Mike?
I have no questions, thank you.
All right, um. We're passing by Scott, okay, Matt?
No additional questions.
Oh, wait, actually, Scott, you can ask a question, sorry, yeah.
I appreciate that, but I don't.
I'm good, and as, thank you.
All right, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Matt. Liz?
Uh, no, I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you. James?
No questions.
All right, and Matthew?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay. Looks like everything has been resolved, Shannon, right? Since we lost Matt, okay, great. That's a, that's a good outcome.
Yes.
Awesome. Um, okay, so I I have no new questions either, but I guess we should check to see if there's anyone in the public.
Correct.
Then we should, go ahead.
Yep, there, it is a public hearing, so if anyone has called in to offer comment regarding this matter, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Uh, again, this is for the Brianna Hilt application at twenty one Eli Road. If anyone's called in to offer comment or have questions for the commission regarding this application, please raise your hand. Using the feature in Zoom. Okay, Madam Chair, there is no hands raised.
Okay, uh, commissioners, any last minute questions before I close the public hearing? Yeah, all right, at this point, the public hearing on this application is closed. And uh, it sounds like we're ready to vote. We need a motion in a second, please.
Uh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion. To approve the application by Brianna Hill. For special permit to install trees in the ridgeline protection setback area. To replace trees removed without approval located at twenty one Eli Road in an R eighty zone.
Matt Hudfagner, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, working with town staff, awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, the Brianna and Natalie, thank you too. They were not able to be here tonight, they have a baby yesterday.
They did have the baby?
Oh, wonderful.
Oh, that's awesome, congratulations. Oh, that's good news, right before Christmas, nice, okay.
Great, thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you. All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, planners report.
Uh, yeah, that's my.
See, you got my bug?
It's me, no, I'm just going through things here, um. All right, so I must report first up, and we do have some gentlemen from Trump on the phone to. Assist if there's uh, additional questions, but I'm gonna run through for our initial. Conversation, and then if needed, then uh, we can get the engineer or the uh, the rep from Trump to to chime in for us, so. Um, the Trump application for the site plan modifications for the. Expansion to what they refer to as their their building two. Uh, was presented and approved to the commission in May of this year. And since then, as with many things, there have been a few uh, modifications that they've need to. Uh, address as they've gone through and advancing to final design. So what we're, what we're looking at and what I, I believe I'd included in the uh, documents that were sent out to everybody last week. Um, so this is the building two, this was the expansion area, and then this was the reconfiguration of the parking. Um, what we're looking at is additional sidewalk along. The um, east side of the building to facilitate access to the parking and um, an egress door that comes straight out. And then the sidewalk comes all the way over to um, where they're they're loading driveway as. There's a additional. Concrete pad on the west side of the building for storage of dumpsters and wood pallets. So we've got dumpsters here and then a wood pallet area in this vicinity. Uh, concrete pad for nitrogen and oxygen tank. Located here with a trench for um, piping the. Uh, the gases into the building, so the trench comes in this vicinity. The concrete pad is here, and that's also what has then precipitated some this. Reconfiguration of the driveway. Um, in order to facilitate not only the truck access for the the deliveries into the building, and so some of the. Widening and push and pull of this, these curb lines to accommodate the uh. WB sixty two tractor trailer moves, but also for the uh, gas delivery, so the truck comes in. Uh, pulls in this way and then backs in to deliver the uh, nitrogen and oxygen and then pulls back out. So, um, and it's staff's recommendation. They. Did a full reconfiguration of this intersection, it was um. A little unwieldy to begin with, and then with some of the accommodations for the tractor trailer, it was getting even more so, so. What they've done is been able to convert some area that had been pavement into lawn. And then some of this will be striped out just for the extra maneuver, just for the um, tractor trailers, but the. Traditional passenger vehicles uh, would not need that area. Um, the revisions do result in a very modest point one percent increase in impervious coverage. But we did ask that the the charts were all updated accordingly, so that when we start again. Uh, whenever Trump's ready to come see us again for their next. Their next uh, two point O update, then we'll we'll ha- have all the current data, and the same with the building height. Uh, the building height, we have them, just take it, it's um. Really just a clerical as to how we measure, and we wanted it to the top of parapet, so there's not really a. Uh, actual change to the building height, it was just a clarification from a measurement as we started. Looking at more detail and some of the drawings that were being shared. Um, with all of these changes. Um, that we went through that, and then as part of the. Delivery for the uh, nitrogen and gas, uh, the the nitrogen oxygen tanks. The, this island uh, needs to be removed and striped out so that we don't have. Vehicles leaving and trying to sneak right by the uh. The trucks as they're making deliveries, um. And just providing that extra room for uh, vehicle maneuvering around the truck, should somebody need to leave at the time a delivery is being made.
Hmm.
Um, I believe that covers everything. Uh, Walt and Peter, I know you're on the phone, if. You wanna chime in, I think I got everything, but. If like to concur, that would be helpful.
All sounded good to me.
Well, well, uh, okay, thank you, Walt.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Shannon. Um, commissioners, questions for Shannon or the applicant, Patrick?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, how about you, Mike?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
No questions for me either, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Matt?
No questions, thank you.
All right, and Liz?
Just a quick clarification, the new sidewalk is that? I I'm. I'm mistaking it, so it, what's, what's the big change? Is it the location? Is it the size? Is it the entrance?
No, it hadn't been there, so right now there's a perimeter sidewalk, and this is the typical, I can't remember if it's, this is six or eight feet up against the parking. So we've got our typical, all the appropriate ADA access and all of those uh, accommodations as needed. This small, narrow sidewalk, I believe it's uh, about four feet. Um, it it gets caught in a building overhang, so the. So, and there's a slight jog in the building. So they could have left it as all stone and then realized that it might be easier for somebody. Uh, you know, working in the building, or if there was an emergency egress that was needed, so they've just opted to, rather than have. Stone or. Um, you know, a mulch bed right up to to the edge, they've opted to place concrete just in that, it's the, again, it's the overhang of the building. They were counting it as impervious um, anyhow. Because of the um, the building overhang, so it's uh. It was already included in the calculation, so it's just this small right up against the building. This main sidewalk. Uh, remains as it was originally presented.
Okay, makes a lot of sense on a rainy day, someone might sneak out that way. Okay, thank you.
Sure, thanks, Liz. James?
No questions for me.
All right, and Matthew?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, yeah, I I mean, yes, there are several uh, changes, but they're minor. Uh, for the site plan, so thank you. For the information, yeah, it looks good.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and allow this to proceed, and then um. We'll expect hopefully building permits here soon. I think they're anxious to move ahead.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Awesome, thank you.
Uh, Will and Peter, thank you for calling in, we're all set, gentlemen.
Thank you, everybody, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Um, and then uh, also under planners report, I just wanted to do a brief update on. Thirty Mill Street, we had uh, accepted application in November, and then his staff was. Doing a more detailed review of the application like we typically do. Uh, we discovered some zoning concerns, and the application as presented was not zoning compliant, so there was a number of. Conversations uh, with the applicant. Early on in November, um, and at this point, they've. Opted to withdraw the application and are going to revisit what their best approach is to move ahead.
Okay.
So, um, just to let them know where that stands.
Once we're looking out for us.
Uh, sure, um, and then uh, as I made reference to. In the email to everyone uh, last week with the agenda review and with the uh, text amendments. Um. You know, the decision to move ahead with the text amendments rests with the commission. Um, I will be putting more information together for the commission for the hearing in January. And then if there are questions that folks have, if there's a handful of things tonight, I'm happy to answer questions, I don't wanna dive. Too much into it, because it's not part of the public hearing, but I'm happy to. Answer questions, or if you've got a a concern, you can call me, and then I can make sure that. Whatever the questions and concerns are all incorporated into the agenda review, so everyone has that information. Um. I intend to get it out, I know the agenda reviews have gotten jammed up a little bit, and getting it out on Thursday for a Monday night meeting is not my ideal. Uh, at least for these items, I hope to get information out to you. Earlier than that, so that there's a little more time to synthesize some of this. Um. But if there are, you know, any brief questions, I'm happy to answer them, or like I said, you can feel free to call me or send me an email. And then I'm happy to um, chat with you and then incorporate. The question and response, so everyone receives that when the agenda review goes out.
Thank you, I I think that's a great way to approach this, um, send. Um, send all your questions, there's no stupid question, we are all going to be learning, um, at the same time. Um, I just like. I feel like, um, there've been a lot of, uh, applications, right, over the last couple of years? We have, I mean, you know, we've been cited in the current, how many housing units, whatnot. Are coming to Farmington, and I think having a well-developed and intentional plan makes sense, but. That may require us pausing for a while, so you, you folks have enough time, we have enough time to react, so. Thank you for bringing this, uh, forward, and, uh, does anyone have any immediate questions, or, uh, you're okay emailing Shannon?
Okay. I am a phone call away, so that's, uh, please, feel free, e- either email or phone call, seriously, either is fine.
And, uh, like deadline maybe, or what do you think? I know the meeting, you're, you're okay, whenever they come in.
Whenever, whenever is convenient, so, I know people are busy with work during their day, so whatever, there's. I, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping to have the agenda review out like a full week ahead of the meeting, so. Um, at least. For those two items, and, and then if I have to do a supplemental with everything else, I will. But no, no deadline, unquestioned.
All right, cool, thank you, Shannon. Commissioners, uh, before we break for the rest of the year, any questions? For Shannon?
Anything else?
Nothing, we're good, okay, so we'll see you on the ninth, put the dates in your calendar. Um, you're stuck with me for one more year.
Uh, minutes.
Minutes, yes, oh, sorry, yeah, you really are, you sure, you, you sure be okay with this, okay? Before we let you go, uh, we do need to approve the minutes from November, please, and we need a motion in a second.
Oh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the November seventh, two thousand twenty-two Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Matt Hudfagner, second.
All in favor? Opposed? All right, we're good, meeting is adjourned, Merry Christmas, see you in the new year.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone, enjoy all your holidays.